This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening and welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education Public Meeting for Tuesday, September 20. To start with, we've actually got a nice recognition to do, so I'll turn that over to Dr. McGowan.
Thank you very much, and if I could ask Mrs. Tricia Neese to come on up to the podium, please, and join Mr. Davis.
Yay!
We received information, communication from Yale University announcing recipients of their 2022 Yale Educator Awards. Mistress Aneesh, Aneese of Brighton High School has been recognized by the Yale Office of Undergraduate Admissions as a recipient of the 2022 Yale Educator Award. The Yale Educator Recognition Program recognizes outstanding educators from around the world who support and inspire their students to perform at high levels and to achieve excellence. Of this year's 339 nominees, who represent 43 states and 21 countries, 48 teachers and 29 counselors were selected to receive the award. Matriculating students were invited to nominate high school educators, and a committee of Yale admissions officers reviewed each nomination individually and designated recipients. In September, the winners were sent their awards with congratulatory letters, and administrators of the high schools were notified of their achievement. The Yale Admissions Office attributes the exceptional quality of the Yale student body to educators like these recipients of the 2022 Yale Educator Award, who shaped their students long before they attend Yale. The Admissions Office is proud to thank these and all educators for their ongoing efforts in motivating and supporting their students. Trish, we are exceptionally proud of your work. We knew that this was the case, but what a great confirmation from such an esteemed university, whose recommendation was made by a student who you taught and went to Yale. Such a great recognition, we're so proud of you. On behalf of the district, thank you. The board wishes to recognize you this evening. Congratulations. Thank you, Trish. Great job.
Next up on the agenda is another form of recognition that will make the superintendent a little bit uncomfortable, which is great. Though this information has been released on many of our major, meaning Brighton's, major communication channels, it is important to note, it is important that we note the announcement of Dr. Kevin McGowan as the New York State Council of State Superintendents 2022, 2023 New York State Superintendent of the Year. There was a lot of detail in the announcements and the press releases that went out, and the official awarding of this award will actually take place in March of 2023 in Albany. Primary criteria are leadership for learning, communication, professionalism, and community involvement. This is just fantastic recognition, and in a moment, I'll give Dr. McGowan the chance to comment, and he'll say what he always says, that it's the totality and the involvement of the community, the great, great teachers we have, we just met one of them, the fantastic leadership we have in the schools, and he'll probably even thank the board about it. But this is his award, and it's his leadership, and it's his vision, and the way we've gone after issues and looked at things, the way we expect to improve every day, and the way we have always a ton of things to work on, and we are focused on those things that most positively affect our kids and our students that earned him this award. There are, I think, over 600, I might not get this number right, public school systems, public school districts in New York State. So this is a pretty select award, and it's really impressive that it was awarded to Dr. McGowan. There was initial recognition on Monday, I think in Saratoga, for the conference, but it is really awe-inspiring that you were selected for this award. You are very deserving of it. We appreciate all you have done for our school and our community, and I think it's due for another round of applause, because we're just really, really thankful for you.
I will, yes, what exactly did you say? How do I say that again? Oh, I'm just kidding. There is no better board to work with, there is no better district to do this work in, and there's no better team to be a part of. It is uncomfortable in the sense that, as I wrote to the staff, I don't teach second grade any longer, I don't teach Global Studies, I am not driving anybody or preparing food, I work with incredible people, and the result is what was being recognized, the result of our work here collectively, and that was a big part of what they asked about in the process, and that is what they are recognizing. And so I'm privileged to be a part of it, I appreciate it. My mother can stop writing letters now, I'm just kidding, she probably doesn't write letters, but I appreciate the contribution that all of you make, and this community and the support of my family, who are exceptional themselves, I think, and their support of their dad and their husband, and so, thank you. Really appreciate it.
I will move on to Agenda Item Number Four, which is public participation. Dan Goldman, I'll ask you to raise your hand just real quick back there. I have two people here who have asked to speak, and I will call them each in just a moment. If you have something you'd like to share with the board and/or the superintendent, please let Dan know, and we will receive a card so that I can appropriately call you up here. First off, I have Paul Flansberg. I hope I can, I hope I pronounced that correctly. Well, I'm sorry. We'll ask that you go to the podium, identify yourself and your address, and then we'll give you three minutes, which is the suggested timeframe.
I appreciate this, I think you're okay?
Yep.
I appreciate this opportunity to speak. And I don't know how to put this. It's a wonderful day to celebrate when two people get awarded and recognized for what they do. It shows a lot of how a school would deserve its reputation, and that's why what I have to say today is, I feel it's unfortunate. I stand here and I speak on behalf of a family, the Priti family, Vincenza, the daughter, and mother and father, Priyanka and Jag.
I'm sorry, we cannot hear issues of a personal nature like that at a public board meeting, because we can't discuss them.
Okay. So I should probably leave the names out. There was an incident here at the school, an alleged incident February of last year, and it precipitated into reporting to CPS, Child Protective Services.
Again, we cannot talk about an issue involving a student or staff in a public session.
If I don't name the student or the staff people, it's, 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 there are some people that are really suffering as a consequence of this.
I think this is best handled by you approaching either the leader in that school, the principal in that school, and/or the superintendent directly, because we won't be able to respond, and it's just not appropriate for us to discuss in public situations that involve a specific staff member, a specific student, or a family.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I don't mean to, I don't mean to break with protocol. It's an important thing to consider, though, when people are suffering as a consequence of what's happened in this, in the school district right now. I don't know what else to say.
Can I maybe address what you've had to say? I would agree with Mr. Davis that, of course, it's not a topic that's appropriate for public discussion, the particular topic that you've brought up. I would say that you're more than welcome to contact any of us to have a conversation or to share your thoughts by email with the Board of Education, and that can be passed along. You're certainly entitled to do that also, but the nature of a public forum and a public space to talk about an individual situation is just not appropriate. I will say, in general, not addressing a specific situation, and I want to be very clear about that, so I'm going to say it again, in general, not addressing a specific situation. Our staff, as we communicated to the community recently in a letter home, acts with incredible integrity, professionalism, and an ethic of care that puts children as the focus of their work in each and every interaction, and does not hesitate to do what needs to be done for all children each and every day. And we feel that that is applied very consistently. We constantly review what we do, we review every individual situation and how we approach those, and feel very, very comfortable in the work that has been done in many situations in our school district, and we will continue to do that, as is our responsibility. So if you'd like to share additional thoughts, I'd be happy to receive those. I too cannot speak to you about an individual family or situation, but I can receive your feedback, as can the Board of Education.
Okay. I guess my concern is that then, my, well, it seems like it could be a way of controlling the situation, though, and I'm not sure if that's the appropriate way to go about the situation.
Perhaps I can elaborate. I can't share with you, nor can anybody in the school district, share with you information regarding a family.
Right.
Anybody else can say whatever they would like to.
Okay.
And I can't say to you, that's not factual. I can't say to you, that's incorrect.
Right.
I can only say to you, as the person that you employ as a taxpayer in this district, that we take very seriously our responsibilities, we follow up on those responsibilities, we do things the right way for the right reason, putting children as the focus of our work and the care of children as the focus for everything that we do. You can decide as an individual to believe what you read or hear, and I can't do anything to tell you that that is wrong, because I'm not permitted to, or you can choose or not to trust that what I'm saying to you is factual and true, that we do this work and that we focus on the right things. I don't know any other way to debate it or discuss it with you.
And you can't.
Other than the same.
And you cannot.
Well, I guess you've delineated some protocol that should be followed, then, I guess, right? I can bring a matter that I have in mind to you directly or to someone else?
Yes.
And we'll deal with it in that regard?
Yes.
Okay. All right, then, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Regina Davis. I will note for the three-minute timeframe, we do not turn off mics. Who's got the yellow? Is that going to be, Julene will hold the yellow at two minutes and 45 seconds, and then the red will go up at three minutes.
I'll keep it short and sweet. During the September meeting, we usually hear about the little ones' first experience in the cafeteria, the sixth graders navigating lockers in their new building, and of course, homecoming. It's all very important, but tonight, I was also hoping that the principals could tell us what some of their classrooms did to commemorate and celebrate Constitution Day. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
I'll just address in general that the principals' reports are pre-prepared and have been submitted in advance of this meeting. I don't recall whether Constitution Day is mentioned or not, but we'd be happy to provide feedback to you. Certainly, if you email that question, we can get back to you with information.
Anybody else for public participation? Moving on to item number five, which is approval of the amended agenda. I'll make a brief comment and say thank you to Kim, because I think in the past week or so, we've amended it a couple of times, so things just pop up, it's the start of school, these things happen. Thank you, Kim, for your quick turnaround and getting some of those things done, so thank you. Motion to approve the amended, amended agenda that was received earlier this evening.
So moved.
Moved by Karen?
Seconded.
Seconded by Esther. All those in favor? Aye. Next, item six, approval of the minutes from the September 6, 2022 business meeting. These are the minutes we obviously saw posted before, you've had a chance to review them. Does anybody have any edits or changes to those minutes? Motion to approve the minutes of the September 6 meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Eleanor. Seconded by Julene. All those in favor? Aye. Next up, we're going to hear from Lou Alimo, and we're going to get an approval of the budget guidelines and the budget calendar.
Good evening, just one second. Okay, good evening. Just a quick presentation on the key budget guidelines that the board has asked to consider this evening, starting off with the budget guidelines. Very consistent from last year, starting, obviously, with the accounting perspective and ensuring that recurring operating expenses are appropriately funded with sustaining revenues. We want to balance budget, that's our commitment to the community each year. We added a slide this, or a point this year, to prudently prepare for the continuity of high-impact programs at the expiration of the federal stimulus funds. We have, we're receiving a good number of federal dollars, we're implementing some high-impact programs. Dr. Rio, Mrs. Fagnola are chairing that work or facilitating that work, and we know that the needs are going to continue going forward. So over these last couple of budgets, we've been working to build in, build in some of that high-impact programming, but we need to be cognizant of that funding cliff at the end of next budget year. And then certainly, we have our blueprint priorities, mental health wellness, academic excellence, the student and family experience, staff support and collaborative culture, safety and planning for the future. So you'll see in the calendar then that follows, you'll see opportunities for presentation, opportunities for community input, all based on presentations around those priority areas. Certainly, as the board does every single year, they look at the economic climate, they look at the tax cap implications and long-term planning. Again, as we build one budget, we're really building three subsequent budgets, so the decisions that we make in one year impact the next couple of years. We will be talking a lot about facilities planning. We are planning for a larger project this May. As we presented all through last year's budget, we have an opportunity for reinvestment that would be tax, tax, our tax impact, tax levy impact neutral. And then certainly, the board has debated each year about compliance with the New York State property tax cap, and that has been a priority for the Board of Education over the last several budgets. Sorry, do you know why it's not changing slides? Please hold. Thank you. Thank you. So then here is our calendar that outlines and, very consistent with prior years, we see opportunity, multiple opportunities for community input in the budget development process, and just outline of what will happen over these next several months as we begin the budget development season, ultimately with the budget vote being this year on May 16, 2023. One of the areas that we usually present in January that we want to take an opportunity is to set the stage for our budget development process is our opening enrollment and projections. So one of the things we first look at is our budget to actual, budget to projected actual, and you could see, we were pretty close in our enrollment projections, except for kindergarten and third grade. So we're looking at that, we're analyzing that to see if that's a new trend, or if that's post-COVID implication. So the actual, the 240 is probably what we would have projected prior to COVID, when we were developing a full-day K program, and last year, our enrollment was significant less than was projected. So something that we're going to look at, and we'll look at the trends. Generally, we assume a certain percentage of the live birth rates in Monroe County, what percentage of that would ultimately come to Brighton schools. The other area where we're off, by 24 students, so about two students per class on average, is at third grade. So we saw an influx of students in third grade, which was inconsistent with our past trend. So something that we'll be looking at, we'll be reviewing with the building administrators, what the next year's projection models will be. So our first stab at the enrollment, you can look at on the right-hand side, again using what they call survival ratios, going through and just statistically looking at the percentage of students that either increase or decrease going from one grade to the next. So this is our preliminary enrollment forecast, generally stable overall, but we'll look at that and see what the impact will be on staffing implications throughout the budget development process. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Comment that it feels like we budget 12 months out of the year, but the background we've got starting here makes sense.
Thanks, Lou.
Thank you.
I neglected to note that, and I happened to think about it when I saw the screen, that we are at Council Rock Primary School tonight, and I forgot to mention that at the beginning of the meeting. Principal Tappin, my apologies. Each year, we take this show on the road, as we like to say, there's dates for us to be at French Road, 12 Corners, and the high school. It's a great opportunity for the board and others to see these schools, note a number of the facility improvements that are taking place, we'll hear about that in a little bit, and also planned future facility improvements, and some of the things that we're looking at to continually improve the learning environment for our kids and our staff. So very excited to be here at Council Rock. And speaking of a facilities improvement update, I think we're going to hear from John Novelli and/or Lou Alimo in regards to what's going on at Council Rock and what we have going into the future.
Larry, do we need to approve the budget guidelines, or is that just we needed to go over the budget guidelines?
I think, I would approve them.
It's noted as an approval.
It's noted as an approval.
Thank you.
Doesn't have any substantive, really, other than you say, yes, we agree.
Thank you for that catch. Motion to approve the budget guidelines and budget calendar as presented by Lou. Moved by Karen, seconded by Julene. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you guys for that. Appreciate it.
It is a good idea.
And now back to the board.
Thank you. So thank you to the Board of Education and Dr. McGowan for giving our team the opportunity to present some of the construction planning that's, that's ongoing, really, year-round. What we want to do is take advantage of this opportunity at each of the schools to reflect on the work that we just completed, allow the principals to talk to somewhat of that return on investment in our academic program, the facilities impacting our academic programs. And then I also would like for John Novelli and Rob Luce to talk about what's next, what are we working on right now? We're in the process of undergoing our building condition survey, which is done every five years. So at future meetings, we'll invite our architects to, to talk about that process and the things that, the recommendations that they're making that help us in our long-term financial planning. So generally, the framework for these is going to be, again, talking about what we just achieved in the last capital project, the impact of that, and then talk about what's next, and what we're working towards, what we're evaluating, and how we're building a priority plan for future capital investment. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Tappin first to talk about what he's observing, the results from the 2017 plan.
Welcome to Council Rock. We're glad you're here.
Thank you.
So I think a lot has been shared about the improvements that have been made here. This is kind of a list from last year of truly the nuts and bolts, but I think that through pictures and having seen students living in it is really the best part of it. So here's our new entrance that we glorified to bring back the butterflies. That wasn't part of the construction, but we added that touch. And secure entrance, place for security to be able to welcome people, but then also safely get them into the building. And then really, just celebrating some of the spaces that, and I want to highlight those, our library, led by, obviously, the construction crew, but really in close consultation with Adele Moatskavichus, who is our librarian. It is, if you haven't been, the pictures are great, but I invite you here to Council Rock to really experience it. It's the thing that gets oohs and ahs as people come in, and it's probably overcompensation because our previous library was in a pretty small, tiny space. We, we made it, you know, big and lively, but it's a really great place, a sanctuary for kids to be able to come, and really having that be the hub of our school was important to us in our design as a primary school we're reading is, you know, kind of the key to everything here. Our cafeteria, so you're in the space right now, and I chose these purposely because it really, this summer, became a centerpiece for professional development for adult learning. Kids are in here and eating, it does fill, and it's very, you know, it's lively, we'll call it that. My staff would say noisy, I would say lively, but this is just highlighting being able to use the space, the natural light, and the room for the adult learning this summer, and it was great. Dr. Rio really took advantage of the space, and we appreciated having visitors. Again, it was one of the first times that people from across the district, K-12, were able to come to the building and see it, and it was great, a prideful moment to be able to show it off. So one of the major investments that we had was the connecting spaces in the new wing between the classrooms, and this just highlights a few of them. Teachers are still developing what those look like. I think we have work to do. COVID maybe set us back a little bit because it was used really as kind of a storage space and to keep things, but now we need to move into what the instructional purposes are for them, and this is between two second-grade classrooms, Mrs. Youngman and Mrs. Jureles. They have a shared library within there that the, both classes can access. I have pictures, you can see that the door can remain completely closed and make three different spaces, unique spaces. One can be opened to expand into the other, or both can be open, but really, this space, the students helped to design what would go in there, and I loved that. They had, I walked in on a class meeting, and they were talking about what should be in those spaces to be shared between. So they have shared indoor recess supplies, they have supplies they might need for different projects, they have books, they have areas to work, they have areas to read, and really, it's all accessible to the kids and adds to the instructional environment in each of their classrooms. We'll continue to push people in thinking on what they're doing in those spaces. This is just one that's exemplary and has developed as we've come back from COVID. Uh-oh. Oh. I may have gone back too many. So these are just interesting student spaces and students actually using them. So as you walk through the new hallway, there are book nooks and benches and small areas for small groups of students to gather and to just live the experience of a primary school, and our kids use them all the time, our teachers use them all the time, to pull individual kids, to be able to have small, private conversations, small, private group meetings, and they are really fun to watch the kids. Oh, that's why, sorry.
Colors are great also.
Yes, absolutely. And then finally, our playgrounds. We lived for a long time without playgrounds, and they may not be the center of instruction, but they are the center of play, which is important to us at Council Rock, and students enjoy them every single day, getting that physical activity. So we are really thankful for what has been provided to us by the board, by the community, and we are learning every day how to take even more advantage of every space that's in the building. So thank you. And I will now turn it over to John Novelli, who's going to talk about what's next in the possibilities of the building.
So Matt had such a great time with three years of construction, that he really wanted to do it all again, so we're going to look at, so in working with Matt, we discussed what we would like to accomplish in his next phase of construction. Our goal would be to create an equitable learning environment for all our students. Even though our classrooms are structurally sound, they're all in need of some upgrades and modernizations. I'd like to see all the classrooms cosmetically overhauled and returned to us as a blank slate. This would allow us to replicate the new rooms and the new sections and give the teachers more flexibility of open spaces. So how do we get So how do we get there with that? So we would start by removing all of the asbestos-containing materials. That's flooring, wall tile, piping, chalkboards. We would replace that with all-new VCT floor tile, drywall, whiteboards, and permethian boards. We would remove all existing built-in coat cabbies, storage cabbies, center islands. We'd replace them all with mobile storage units and creating more flexibilities for the teachers and the kids. We would remove all of the current plumbing fixtures, piping, and we would replace all of that in each classroom with a vanity, a drinking fountain, storage cupboards. We'd also look to install bathrooms in the six current rooms on the west wing that currently do not have bathrooms in them. We would look to do electrical upgrades and data upgrades, including a replacement of fluorescent, all the fluorescent lightings with LED lightings. And then finally, at the end, we would like to replace all of the hallway floor tiles to match the existing of the new, to make everything come back together again.
What would you think, John?
So, as you can see, this, these rooms have old paneling in it and the corkboard, which is on top of all of them, these are all used for soundproofing. So all of that would need to be updated. The built-in cabbies, the coat hooks, and the tiling would all have to be removed. By removing that center island would create a lot of space. So by even having to build out some of these bathrooms to get them to ADA cable builds, we would have still enough room to do it. So pretty much, we would have a pretty much open space that we would be able to have the teachers set up any way that they would like. Obviously, the toilets are outdated, everything, the bathrooms are dated. A lot of these, a lot of these areas are from 1957, and like I said, they're still functional, we still get everyday use out of them, but compared to the new section, there's a lot of work that can be done in there. You know, replacing the doors and so from the previous construction, you can see where we just have the block walls that we painted just for now, those will all be drywalled over, all-new lighting, all-new window treatments. So everything that you see in the new section, besides the shared space, just because we don't have the square footage for that, would be pretty much the same as we would like to do in the existing classrooms.
And then just adding to what John said, the educational goals for those updated classrooms, he really said it, but really creating more instructional space in those rooms. They're a little awkward in their inflexibility, especially compared to the new spaces. The new spaces has all furniture that can be moved, adjusted to allow for different spaces for students to learn in. So really looking at that, and then for us also building within those classrooms then what that new furniture could look like for flexible furniture use in terms of students at standing desks, students at tables, all the flexible furniture that is in, we call it 21st century, by the time it happens, we'll be halfway through it, but so I think we'll just call it, we'll call it flexible furniture for students to use so that they're comfortable in their learning. I think we found great advantages for students feeling that comfort and finding what works for them, and I love walking into a classroom. The teachers' minds have shifted in that you don't really have a spot that's yours forever, you have a spot that's yours for as long as it feels good. So in the morning, you might choose the seat that's, or the standing desk, and by afternoon, your legs are tired, and you get to go over to the bouncy ball because you need to get a little bit of energy out, and that can shift throughout the day, and that would be provided for, so.
Do you feel like, Matt, we're getting good feedback from the teachers in those new spaces, what's really working well and what things maybe they'd modify a little bit? Are we able to apply some of that learning to some of the new ideas that we're using?
Absolutely, absolutely. You know, I think the one thing that was the biggest adjustment was the storage and what was defined as storage. It wasn't a closet, but they got, they're finding how to build. I think certain grade levels, in particular kindergarten, has larger things, and they were struggling with not having a place to close the door and have it disappear when they weren't using it. But I think that everyone has found the joy and the flexible, the cabbies that can move, they can be flipped around, they have whiteboards, and really utilizing them for instruction has been a growth for us and I think could contribute to what we do in the new-old classrooms.
That's great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Just in closing, as we talk about this, so the work that John had outlined is, the reality is it's millions and millions of dollars worth of work that's required, just to put it in perspective. So what, why we're putting this forward now is, we're at the five-year mark where Commissioner approved the addition and the renovations that have happened in this building. So we are opening up the building aid units, is what they're calling, the cost allowances. So now this building is more aidable. So as we build a capital plan, long-term capital plan specifically for this building, it will have to be phased over multiple years, and the reality is we don't have the luxury of any swing space anymore in this building. So as we would take a wing offline and do renovations, we have to design work in this building that would be limited to the summer, summertime. So all the work that John talked about will be in development, but it's going to take years and years to bring that up, so it's a consistent, equitable environment from, really from a facilities planning standpoint. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions from the board for Lou or any of the team in regards to Council Rock? Karen, you were just in the library today.
It's the best day ever. It was my opportunity to come back as a parent volunteer for my new kindergarten student, and it's been a joy to watch that project in particular come to life, and really what a difference to, from a parent's perspective, to be a volunteer there and to see the kids have space to move around. I mean, just from, just that one tiny piece of it, just that they're not bumping into each other like koifish in a pond, made that experience so, just so different. But, you know, Lou, I did have a question, and it was about the phase-in, and Lou addressed that, so.
Great. Any other questions, Karen?
I just wanted to say that I really like the alternative seating ideas for the students. Every child learns differently, and every child has different needs, and, you know, some children need to move and they need to stand, and I think that's a really, that's a wonderful idea.
Thank you. Next up, we have principal reports, and we're in Council Rock, so it probably makes sense for Danielle to start for us tonight.
Well played. And bring this down about five feet. I mean, sorry. Okay, here we go. All right, so I am coming in today after being at Outdoor Ed. Our first team went out to Outdoor Ed yesterday and today, and then the next team will go out... Dan, the update. Come on, Dan. It's not Dance Bowl? It's Eric... Sorry, okay. So the first team went out there yesterday, and I just have to say before I even go on to my actual presentation here, it poured yesterday. It was absolute torrential downpours, thunder, lightning, you name it all, and I will say with all of that, it was by far my best experience in education in the last five years. First of all, that team that organizes Outdoor Ed, they pivoted and switched so quickly, and for about two hours, the students played games. They played board games, they played Jenga, and they, there was nobody complaining, there was nobody bickering, there was a ton of smiles and just calm enjoyment. And so kudos to the team for pivoting, kudos to the kids for pivoting, and I really, I walked out of there and was like, I feel so good just watching kids be kids. It was, it was really amazing. And then, of course, the skies cleared and they got to have the rest of their experience yesterday, all the way through their campfire, and then they were back again today for the rest of their session. So all in all, a great start to ODE, which means a great start to our year for our sixth graders and for all of us. So I just wanted to share that because I'm feeling like really energized and pumped by that.
Great.
I'm also feeling really energized and pumped by the start to our year, and I think the students and the staff would echo that. Actually, I know they've echoed that because that's the feedback that I've been getting overall. We've brought in some, some new norms that people are getting adjusted to, from morning arrival, me being out in the parking lot and pushing cars along so that they don't stop right in front of the entrance and cause a backup on 12 Corners, to cell phones being in lockers throughout the day, backpacks being in lockers throughout the day. Ironically enough, I totally miscalculated that. I was prepared for lots of questions about cell phones, and all of the questions were about backpacks. So just kind of new operating norms for students, and they're learning their, you know, executive functioning strategies to figure out that they don't need to go to their locker every single period, and that they can strategize and plan out their day. The halls are so much clearer and so much calmer. Kids are not knocking each other with their backpacks, they're not walking around with, you know, with 18 pounds of I don't even know what in their backpacks. So it's just, it's just helped contribute to a better feel and a better start. Same thing with lunch, no, no devices, no backpacks. And again, back to my statement about watching kids be kids, for 30 minutes, watching them sit at tables and interact socially with each other is the absolute best part of the day, hands down. So we're feeling really, really good about that, we're feeling really good about the interactions that we're seeing with students. We started our year just reviewing all of our safety procedures with staff, with students. We've done some drills already, and I think, you know, we're feeling like we've got our feet underneath us. And then my challenge to all of the students is to make sure that by the end of the year, every single one of them can state to us that they're involved in something, be it a club, be it a sport, whatever it is, but that's my challenge that I have given every single student. And every time I have an opportunity and the staff has an opportunity, we're echoing that challenge and really trying to build connectedness and a sense of belonging in our school through whatever avenue that might be for each individual student. So that building community has felt great, and our staff meeting at the beginning of the year, they endured me for two and a half hours in our first staff meeting, so God bless them all, they should win something for that, but we ended our day by watching a video about the 2011 Giants, where they had started a dismal season, and then they had a motivational speaker come in, and he talked about them being all in and all coming together. And so we ended with that, and every staff member has a little poker chip that has the TCMS logo on one side and "All In" on the other side, and that's, that's kind of our motto, that's where we all are, and people are feeling really good about that. Staff are walking through the halls, they cast me, they're like, "All in." I walked past Jen Kramer the other day, she's standing at the door of her classroom and waiting for kids to come in, and she pulls her poker chip out of her pocket and just goes like this. So just building back that community of like, we are all in this together, staff, students, and everyone else. And that goes along with what were our changes for homeroom and Wynn. Last year, we didn't have a homeroom, and Wynn, students went to Wynn, a different class each day, which caused a lot of confusion for students and staff alike. So what we've done is we built back in an eight-minute homeroom and our 30-minute Wynn. Students are with the same teacher for both of those every single day. So, you know, helping to form that connectedness, there are no more than 12 students in each of those courses, and every Wednesday, the entire building is doing some community building lesson in common in Wynn. So there's, there's no, you know, going out to an academic teacher, that's our day, that's our focus. So really building a culture around community building and connectedness with intentional decisions in our schedule and what we can manage. And then our last piece to help with that is we were able to prove some creative work to assign what we're calling an RTI lead to each of our teams, and this person's role is to help facilitate conversations with each team of teachers around common tier-one interventions, so we can look at what we're doing to support all students in the classroom, and then as students are not responding to those general interventions, brainstorming and continuing to monitor response to additional tier-two interventions as we move through our RTI process. So each team also has this kind of go-to person, this champion, that can help them through their support of each of our students. So lots of big changes, all like feeling really good and positive around building up staff and students. We've had our beginning-of-the-year fun, we had new teacher orientation, where Mrs. Kugel and her TCMS Strong eighth-grade mentors are amazing, they gathered together for half a day with quite a few different stations for students to work through, getting their technology and getting the lay of the land. We had our first PTSA meeting with the principal last week, week and a half ago. Curriculum night was Thursday night, so it was great to see people in person, and it was great to stand out there and listen to parents stop and say, "Your staff is really amazing," because they are, so it was great to hear that. Fall sports are in full swing, homecoming celebrations, many of our students participated in the, in the homecomings spirit days, you can see some pictures there. We had school pictures last week, and on Friday, we also had our urban suburban ice cream social, and everybody loves ice cream, so it was great way to end the week. So these are just some pictures from orientation. And then this is us in full gear in week one, students are peeling apples for a science project, we've got PE going on, social studies lesson, and then this was us surviving our first full week, last week. And then our dates ahead, lots of ODE, math testing starts tomorrow, so we get our district benchmarking up and running so we can figure out what supports we need for particular students. We have our club and activity fair next week during lunches for all students, and October will be here before you know it.
Thank you. I'm surprised that you didn't get more pushback on cell phones, frankly.
Quite honestly, I received numerous emails thanking me. That's what I received. So it was, it was really great, and the kids have been terrific. I honestly think, and this is just speculation, but I actually think they're relieved to not have to worry about the distraction. So it's been, and teachers have noted, wow, they're present, students are present. So it's very nice. Thank you for your support on that.
Questions from either the board? Thank you very much. LaShara?
Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so as a new principal, the new leadership team, with Shirley Flores and myself, our focus was to listen and learn as much as we could and to also engage all stakeholders. So one of the first things that we planned before the beginning of the school year was a summer back-to-school bash for families and staff, and there was only one requirement, you wear a name tag, because we're still trying to learn names. So we got to know each other in a formal setting at Buckland's Lodge, we got to know each other, people brought their pets, they brought their families, and it was a way to start the school year off with re-establishing ourself and re-establishing our culture and our climate that we're, that we're together and just to get to know everyone. So that's one of the ways that we involve stakeholders. The second way, we know how important our parents are in our collaboration with PTSA. So we had three cookies and conversation dates before the school year even started. Two was during the day, and one was in the evening to accommodate working parents, and it was just a time for an hour at the playground where we just met parents. We answered questions, we got to know new families that were coming into the district, and it was, again, very informal, but listening to all stakeholders. First day of school, welcoming students, we wanted it to be lively, so we had balloons, we used a local business to do "Car My Yard" instead of the big company "Car My Yard." So it was a local minority-owned business that did balloons for the doors to delineate which doors the students walked in, and also that car at the front that said, "Welcome to French Road." And thinking about that culture and climate again, this is a new initiative that we are bringing to French Road, it's going to be called the Bruins Den. Once a month, we're getting the whole school together. We did it the very first day of school, and it was very, all we did was bring out, we have a bear, a mascot. The mascot does not have a name, so right now, we're taking names and we're going to vote, but we introduced the bear, they're very sad that it didn't have a name, but it's just going to be a time to celebrate and share. Our next Bruins Den will be dedicated to Hispanic Heritage Month, and we're hoping to have a group that actually, some of the students actually attend friends, they're in the dance group, a Mexican dance group, actually perform. They're in the dance group, a Mexican dance group, actually perform during our next Bruins Den. And we're also going to announce the name of our nameless bear. September, of course, is a time for our star quality assembly, just to go over the star qualities. And another difference for this year is that usually we put it in a PowerPoint with students who are recognized for star qualities. We're going to put it in the parent newsletter and we're hoping to get more teachers to participate and staff to recognize students so that students can see their names just in the newsletter and outside of the door because it's usually displayed outside of We are rolling out the habits of mind. Started some work last year, but now we're really trying to connect with Council Rock especially. So the first four habits are going to be the focus for this year. This month and next month, you do about two, one habit every two months is managing impulsivity. So again, that's in the parent newsletter, it's in the staff newsletter. And also when I walk around the classrooms, I have stickers. I put on a, on an index card and I just say, nice job if your students managed impulsivity. And I hand it to the teachers and tell them to celebrate with their students later. So just another way to slowly recognize the habits and incorporate it into our daily Sense of belonging, if you think about the panorama data, sense of belonging stood out for staff and students. So in response to that, in a conversation that one of the E&amp;L teachers had with a student, we are starting a multipostural club. And it's going to have a non-traditional structure because we want to increase access for underrepresented groups in school. So instead of being in the afternoon, it's going to be in the morning where students can have early morning busing and then they're already in school instead of not being able to get a ride. We're also focusing on Hispanic Heritage Month this month with morning announcements. We recognize influential Latino and Latina people, doesn't have to necessarily be Americans. We're going to have presentations for each grade level. We're having food tasting. The first food tasting is actually a donation from one of our teachers. Where every student is going to get something very small to eat. We have Music Fridays and we're going to have a speaker from local government. This is just to share some of the work around the school and all of the work around schools about getting to know students, celebrating students. And the one in the middle, I'm going to share that especially because it says, it's from a fifth grade student and it says, one person who inspires me. And it says, Ms. Evans and Ms. Florin because they are pretty people. And then he went on to elaborate to his teacher that we have an aura about us that is positive. So this is only week, what, three of school? And then he actually wrote that, it touched my heart, so you know, I had to share it. Especially in the top office. More pictures of students getting to know each other in the classroom, gifts that students have given me to hang up in my, in my office. I was going to say classroom. Here's other pictures. We have our therapy dogs that we turn. We have Cosmo and the Scotty that come throughout the week and they are just a calming presence in, in the school. It's just amazing how the kids respond and how they know how to respond to the kids and the adults. So those are our two therapy dogs. And then our PTSA events, we have popsicles with the principal that was well-attended. We had our family picnic this past Friday, which was also awesome. And yesterday, yes, during the Bills game, we had our meeting with the principal at seven o'clock and it came out at seven thirty. So we have to think about that the next time, make sure we don't have any conflicts with the Bills game. Upcoming events, we have that one yesterday. We have our curriculum night next week. Rosh Hashanah is next week and our third and fourth grade curriculum night is on September 29th. So thank you.
Thank you.
No, welcome again. We're very glad you're here. And I think in your first couple of slides, I would also say never underestimate the power of a good chocolate chip cookie. So good idea with the cookies and conversations. That was a great idea.
Thank you.
Great first principal report.
Yes. Thank you very much. Principal Tappin.
You always know how to keep me on my toes. I thought, oh, if I'm not going first, I must be going last. So we have had really an amazing first few weeks. I think I echo what Danielle shared. It just feels, I don't want to say it, but it feels closer to normal. I, I just thought, I looked out at my teachers that opening day and they were like waiting for, and if this, do this, if this, do this, if this, do this. And I said, just do what you do. And they all went, oh, okay. So that's kind of how it's felt. We had amazing parent volunteers from PTSA out on the bus loop. And when I think about one year ago to this year, the difference is amazing to have two-thirds of our school know where to go and what to do versus none. It was amazing to have our first and second graders know where they were going. Our kindergartners learned really quickly. By the end of the first week, they all, they were like, don't tell me where I'm going. I know where I'm going. Our PTSA also came up with a brilliant idea. All of our students get a bus tag that tells their name and bus they're on so they're quickly identifiable with a teacher's name. And we've always done that, but we also added a sticker to the back that tells which colorful door they go in in the morning. And that's helpful to us as staff to do a quick look and say, oh, you're going in the yellow circle doors and we can point them in the right direction. But bringing it to parents' attention so that they could review it with their children to say, oh, you're going through the rainbow butterfly doors has been proven really, really helpful as well. So just a really great two weeks and I'm so thankful for the supportive staff that we have at Council Rock and the families have been amazing as well. So welcoming our students back, lots of creative ways the teachers welcome. This is one of the Lego walls that was provided by Brighton Education Fund. And this is Caroline Bucci who just creatively went after open house. She met each kid. She went out and found and created a little Lego person to try to represent who they were. And one of her favorite stories is All Are Welcome. And this is outside of her door, outside of our kindergarten door. And it's just such a special way to welcome each child and have them feel included and represented. Our kindergartners, look at them, doing cosmic yoga within the first two weeks. So they were, I was definitely a distraction taking pictures, but they were using their strategies and really looking like they were knowing exactly what they were doing. So it was awesome. And in kindergarten, so Gingerbread Man and Pete the Cat, what do they have in common? Well, teachers are using both of those characters to help kindergartners orient to the building. So the Gingerbread Man has been used for many years. The Gingerbread Man escapes from the oven and then leaves clues for where they might find him. So they head to the nurse, they head to the main office, they head to the playground so the kids start to know it. Pete the Cat is the latest addition and he leaves groovy clues all over as well. So kindergartners have a really unique way of figuring their way around the building with adult help. That was really exciting and fun. If you were here that first week, the kindergartners told you, Ms. Smith, have you seen the Gingerbread Man? I said, oh my goodness, I haven't seen him, but I will watch for him. So it's a really, a really creative way to get our kids out and around the building. I also saw some really great ways of using literature to build in routines and expectations. So much of what we do for these first several weeks are build those expectations. But this is in a particular first grade class, Mrs. Bennet, Miss Bennet's class, and she uses the literature to talk about how to make a friend. So each book represents something that we're teaching within our social emotional lessons. I think sometimes we say, oh, go make a friend. We forget that sometimes kids don't know how. So respecting personal space, being patient, learning other people's names. There are a whole bunch of different ways and different books that help understand how to make a friend and then how to keep a friend, which is a skill that all of our students are continuing to grow and learn. And then for me, it's a lot of returns to things that we haven't been able to do. And one of the things that I loved that we got rid of or that I had to put a pause on was having second graders come and help me with the morning announcements. So these are three young ladies from Mrs. Cannon's second grade class who are helping me do the pledge to the flag and then the Council Rock pledge. And they help every morning and a rotating group of second graders will come every day to help me do those pledges. It's really exciting. I had a lot of trouble with the selfie because I was literally doing the announcement while I was doing it. It was not my strength, so. We have also had two curriculum nights, kindergarten and first grade. We're completed last week. We have second grade coming up next Wednesday, the 28th. Just a really great opportunity for families to come into the building. We gather here in the cafeteria to just hear about, about school, about some of the procedures. And then teachers are able to share a lot about what students are going to be learning, their routines, things that parents can expect and give them a chance to ask questions. I love hearing about habits of mind throughout the four buildings. We are continuing with our quest to continue to grow in that. We also have the same four as Ms. Evans as our fall focus habits, so managing impulsivity, listening with understanding and empathy, responding with wonderment and taking responsible risks for this fall. And then parents at home, if you have any questions about it, under the parents tab on Council Rock's page is a student thinking, which details a lot more. And we're really thinking as a committee, how we can continue to inform and educate parents about how to use habits of mind, whether it's the first time you've heard about it or whether you'd like to know a little bit more and go a little bit deeper. Lots of events coming up, as I said. I know Rosh Hashanah is coming up next Monday and Tuesday. No school, curriculum night, Yom Kippur. It's kind of a up and down few weeks coming here. We've got Superintendent's Conference Day and Indigenous People Recognizing Columbus Day. And then right after that, so this is important and we'll continue to send these out, but right after those kind of choppy times, we'll be doing school pictures. And that is on Tuesday, the 10th and Wednesday, no, Tuesday, the 11th and Wednesday, the 12th after our Monday off. So any questions?
I'm sorry that Rob and John had to leave, but I do want to note, we're obviously in your school tonight. The school looks fantastic. And you have said this to us a number of times, John and the team just do a fabulous job taking care of this school and getting after things. I always want to make sure we recognize them as well because they really do great work. And you've said that to us a couple of times.
Absolutely. We couldn't do it. And the, John, his leadership, and then all of the custodial staff, they are responsive. They're responsive to a lot of needs that other buildings don't necessarily have to deal, have to deal with the sawdust and the, you know, they go running whenever we call and it, it really does look incredible. And, and they keep it that way. It's not just the first week of school, they keep it that way. So thank you for recognizing that.
Tom Hall.
Yes, we're back to school. We were hoping to have our Bruin mascot ready for homecoming, but it did not happen. Back order, just like everything.
Supply chain.
Supply chain issue. Supply chain, yeah. Heard a lot of excuses, you know, and really there's no other shop in town.
Bruins are way backed up. Bruins are way backed up.
Yeah, you know, so they're, they're in high demand, I guess. We're, we're behind some sort of rooster and some other animal. We're hoping we're going to roll it out in the new year and we'll have some big shindig once we found out when.
Who has the rooster? It's going to come. Stay tuned.
Yeah, that's a great question.
And what is their mascot, actually?
Who?
The rooster.
I don't know. Did they say they have rooster and some other thing? I, I don't know. Should probably make it up. But it's a bit changed at the high school too. You know, we're talking about the morning show at the middle school and, you know, I think about the announcements at Council Rock and French Road and how that just kind of morphs at the high school. And our kids presented at the faculty meetings with the high school students, they presented at the faculty meeting, they're doing recorded shows and then they're doing a PA announcement. And, you know, this started during COVID. Homeroom did get cut down in terms of the minutes and time allotted to, you know, limit the school level and add a flex. And it's really worked out, but our students came together this summer and really put together a nice opportunity. It's running really smooth and they have a brand new studio. If you come over to high school in 112 and then hopefully it'll be updated, you know, when we do our renovations in the tech area. Brand new studio, they're working really hard this summer and presenting to our faculty. And they pretty much take care of everything. We get an email every morning with the show link. You can click it on, watch it, watch the recording or do it at your leisure. And then they come upstairs and they grab the PA and put in the code and do the announcement. I don't have to do anything. So it's just amazing and they're doing a great job. Similar to the other buildings too, you know, we have our own ways of doing the, talking about expectations for the year, our Brighton believes qualities, you know, the Brighton mission statement, safe, caring, welcoming, harassment-free environment. And part of that, through our extended homerooms, we did, we talked about our new Brighton beliefs packets that were developed last year where we talked about打架, sexual harassment, fighting drugs, alcohol, vaping, and then just general behaviors and expectations. Right in the first two days, Safe Schools helpline, our emergency procedures we go through, what's flex for our new students and reminding them what they can use for flex and with their free periods, how lucky they are to have that kind of a schedule at Brighton High School and trying to work with students on, you know, using it appropriately and productively. Mentioning the students too and really driving at home that we do have hardship funds. We have a lot of things that we ask kids to pay for. And that's something probably five years ago now that students recommended, they didn't know there was all this money available. And while it's limited, we've actually now, any donations we get from alumni, for giving tours, people who want to say, I love, I love Brighton, I want to donate, I put it all in the hardship funds. And that gets spent, kids who really need it. So it's really great. Open campus and our phones too. The high school, their classroom is a no-cellphone zone. And I just love that image up there with the cell phone calling out for the student to, you know, check me and do this, do that. And I'm hearing very similar things that I think Danielle has. Our teachers have been pretty relieved and from the, from, for the most part, talking to students in the hallways, like they, they get it, they understand and, you know, helping them to focus in the room. Not everybody's happy with it, but for the most part, it's working pretty well. And for us, you basically just have it out of sight, out of mind when you come in. And like I would, it's been going pretty well for the 10th or 11th day of school. That's our mission statement that we kept coming back to in our first few days of extended homeroom. And when we have an issue or a discipline issue, we go back to the statement, where did you, where did you not follow our, our mission for Brighton High School, keeping it a caring, professional and free from harassment. And if you see something, say something. I think more important at the high school than any place, but they're certainly going to see things in social media. We drive that home when we talk about the emergency procedures, the Safe Schools helpline and making sure that we're taking care of each other by remembering that. And that's, that's a good thing. It's not snitches or anything like that. That's what we need people to do to keep us safe. Always highlight some sort of algae classroom in the first report and this is no different. Kind of have a background in it and enjoy that. Stopped in a Sue Wade's class, they were doing a lab, scientific method basically, but instead of just using either manipulations or something else, they had pill bugs. And this particular experiment they were doing was under different lights. Where were the bugs going? Did they favor a particular light more than others? Other students had setups with darkness versus a lot of light and going through and discussing with one another. And those are those little critters that you might see all over. They're almost on every continent. They've been here, you know, for, for, they've been around forever. But the kids had a lot of fun with them, even in the 10th grade. We also talking about a sense of belonging, looking at the panorama of data with our staff. These are the questions that we broke up into faculty groups in the gym, actually after our faculty meeting in the auditorium. And they were put into groups of 10 people and they had to answer these questions with one another. Most of them didn't even know who each other were. And got to know each other a little bit. We spent about 30 minutes doing that, enjoyed some food and fun. And I think we'll be developing those activities for conference days and for several of our faculty meetings to come. And if you think about it, in the last several years, we just haven't had an opportunity to really come together. We had Zoom meetings or we had big auditorium meetings where people didn't really get together and we didn't put people in small rooms. So we're just trying to get back to that. People want to know who their community is. Forty-five new transfer students at the high school. If you, if, maybe you forgot or maybe you didn't know, when we have transfer students at the high school, every single kid is put into our support center for the first five weeks of school. No matter where they come from, private, parochial, out of state, from a different country, they're in there for five weeks. They have a one-on-one teacher and they get to know them over those five weeks and kind of manage and see how they're doing. If they're doing great after five weeks, we, we take them out. If they still need support or we're seeing some red flags, you know, some places where they might be, there's some needs, we'll keep them in and address it accordingly. We also give each one of them a mentor, phone calls home to the families, and then one-on-one meetings, two or three in the fall and in the spring. Lou has been doing a great job with the enrollments for sure. I'll have to talk to him about what he's predicting for next year though. I think we're a little off, but we'll see. But look at that class of 2023. This senior class is the biggest one we've had since 2013. They're going to be gone and our incoming freshmen are going to be 266. Probably over the summer, we'll be up to about 266. Probably over the summer, we'll be up to about 280, 285, but we'll definitely have fewer numbers. That senior group is huge right now. We too are in our, this is our fourth year of the Therapy Dog Program. Again, thank you to the board. Thank you for Kevin for being so supportive of us and the Therapy Dog Program. Matt and I are actually presenting at a seniors conference in October on how to build and develop a Therapy Dog Program, but without your approval, that would never have happened. It's amazing how many people don't get to do that. Atticus, if you've seen him, belongs to Teresa Mojer. Hossif's still kicking around at fourteen. Usually has to be outside at the end of the year for testing support. Don't really bring her inside anymore. She's old. And, but she's still around. Lily with Jenny Pajani, Josie with Holly Giuliano. Not all these dogs are in the building the same day. We kind of have a schedule that works. Delilah, Annie, a new lab in the tech office, and then Lil Winnie. Four years old, Lil Winnie is the best. If you ever want to just come to the high school, if you call and we'll let you know if Lil Winnie's there, you can see them and just see the magic that Lil Winnie causes with these students. It is quite amazing, and it also helps the principal a lot every day to see that little dog. And we have Big Winnie with Jim Piquetti, new dog this year in the classroom. Jenny did a great job rolling that out, and so far, so good.
I was making up for the enrollment drop with the number of dogs.
Not there, but all of them are there every day. But they're all certified and ready to go. PSATs, you know, again, I think Kevin helped. This is probably the sixth year of us giving the PSAT to all students during the school day. And we have ninety, ninety-five percent participation versus before that, when it was on a Saturday, maybe seventy-two, seventy-three percent. So that's been a huge plus for us.
Can I just pause it for a second? Sorry, I just want to point out and thank the board again because that's a cost. Right? So it used to be outside of school day, it's an equity issue, and it's an access issue when it's not offered during the school day, primarily because it's just interesting when you take the PSATs and you have all experiences, the amount of mail that starts to come to you about college opportunities, it's very different if you do not take it. And so having kids in that system who then start to be presented with information and options that they may not have otherwise thought about is huge. So thank you for your support of that. Thanks, Tom. And it's a huge love for the high schools. Thank you for making that happen.
When the results come back, I mean, students who maybe would have never studied for the SAT realize, "Okay, maybe I need to try to take some classes." Again, we can tap into the PTSA funds. We help a lot of students with some of their classes to, again, equity factor, but... And it's, again, ninety, ninety-five percent of the kids are taking. Wonderful homecoming, Teresa Mojer, all the advisors, Anna Holcomb, who's the student council advisor now. Did a great job all week with themes, theme days, and a lot of fun. Oops. And for our four different themes for the, for the school year, you know, seniors one usually they do, but kids had a great time, and most of this was completed, because we were so early this year, by the start of school, and then they were able to get into their dances and do those other things. So enjoyed it. A lot of things coming up. We have a Bavona parent presentation tomorrow night in open house. Big Club Fair in the gym on the thirtieth for all of our clubs. It's really like a college fair where you're going and seeing all these clubs. The students are running it, several days off, and... Oh, the Fall Play, so we were coming up pretty quickly at the end of October on the Fall Play and various other things as well, so.
I should have asked this when you were going through, but you noted forty-five transfer students. Is there a normal number? That seems high.
No, we've had thirty-five, we've had fifty-five, we've had sixty. And, you know, the amazing thing is, I don't know how Lou figures this out, but we'll gain forty-five students, but we also lost thirty-three. So, you know, that, you know, is very small, and that happens almost every year. You wouldn't think that many kids would leave, but, you know, they do. They go to different places and other things, so.
Thank you. Any other questions from board? Just to all four of the principals, thank you very much. What a great start. It's exciting. Kids are happy, and it's nice to hear that, just people feel like it's getting back to something similar to normal anyways. Next up, we have the Consent Agenda, which includes some different fundraising activities. Motion to approve the Consent Agenda as listed.
So moved.
Moved by Esther?
Seconded.
Seconded by Honor? All those in favor? Any other comments before we adjourn?
No, it's just I think the four reports are awesome and a great representation of the work that's happening. And Danielle, it is, was Danielle's first opening, although not obviously brand-new, but excellent, ready to go. So excited for you, but all four of you and Lou, Alison, Donna, of course, do the work that you do to get everything off to great start. The entire team and our staff, it really was a fantastic opening, so. And homecoming was just dynamite, so thank you for everybody's work on that, too.
I did have somebody say to me in Wegmans, of course, that I'll direct this to sort of you, Lou and the team, asking us if we were having bus issues. And while there were a few things out there that we were dealing with, I recognize Lou and the team for all the work they're doing there as well, so.
Lots of flexibility. Our community's been patient. We ask them to continue to be patient and consider where they can be patient. And, but Lou's team has really been remarkable in making up for a lack of drivers that everybody's experiencing. Our team is patching it together. It's not a crisis moment, but if anybody would like to be a driver, we would encourage them to apply. But really, they've done a remarkable job in managing that. Lou, anything you would add?
No, it was a rough opening day with driver shortage and things like that.